Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, November 28th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada." Thank you to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio and to the National Film Board of Canada for the video of our country. We'll move into our meeting and we'll start with the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the minutes of the city council meeting held November 14, 2016, be approved.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to correct before they're adopted? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then we move to the adoption of the agenda. We have one additional item. Whoever's going to make that motion, it'll be 8.3, adoption to the subdivision and development appeal board. Councillor Rice.
Adoption of the agenda with the addition of item 8.3, subdivision and appeal board appointment.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And this brings us to everybody's favorite time of night, the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing. And so I don't know if there was anybody that was here that wished to make a presentation to council on any matter that wasn't the subject of a public hearing. I see that there are some people that may be here related to a development permit and now would be an appropriate time if you was to make a presentation with respect to that development permit. But if not, and I don't see anybody else coming forward, I'll just remind everybody that there is this opportunity at every regular city council meeting to come forward and address council. But seeing as nobody's going to come forward tonight, we'll close the delegation portion and we'll move into our public hearings. Our first item is 6.1, the Land Use Bylaw Amendment, C-1260-64, and I'd look to administration for an introduction.
Mayor Given, sorry, just on the item with the development permit that that is scheduled after the public hearing, so administration recommends that people come forward at that time once we have--
During the development, okay.
Yes.
During the development permit hearing, sure. We don't do them frequently at council.
That's correct.
So thank you for reminding me of the process. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Downing.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about a land use bylaw amendment from IR, Intensive Recreation, to DC-15, Country Residential Direct Control. A land use bylaw amendment application has been submitted to the city of Grand Prairie. The proposed amendment would rezone a .68 hectare portion of Lot 1, Block 1, Plan 1224325 from Intensive Recreation to Country Residential Direct Control. At the last council meeting, November 14th, council gave first reading to bylaw C-1260-64 and set the date, time, and location of this public hearing. The property is located west of the current termination of Highway 43. It is adjacent to the future Highway 43X bypass, south of Township Road 722, and west of Range Road 64. The property is currently home to the Happy Trails Campground and Cabins. The purpose of this rezoning is to subdivide an existing country residential home and to facilitate selling that property, in order to facilitate selling that property. Access to the site will be through a shared easement agreement through the campground. The proposed residential land use district is not expected to create any land use compatibility issues with the surrounding land uses. The house is currently constructed on the property and is functioning as a private residence. There is adequate separation from the sensitive environmental area adjacent to Bear Creek River. An environmental reserve area will be dedicated at the subdivision stage, as shown on the This amendment is consistent with the future land use map in the IDP, the Interim Municipal Development Plan, which designates the property as residential, as well as the municipal development plan, as that document was recently amended in order to take the land uses from the IDP. The amendment is also consistent with the MDP provisions that speak to environmental setbacks and preserving environmental easements. The properties within the rural service area are subject to the county's land use bylaw until rezoned into a city land use district. The proposed DC-15 Country Residential District contains city land uses but accommodates its agriculture activities and larger home occupations than allowed in the urban residential districts. This type of rezoning is appropriate in this context as there is a much larger lot and there's greater distances from surrounding developments. This reduces land use compatibility concerns. Advertising was completed in accordance with the Municipal Government Act and the land use bylaw. And administration recommends that council give second and third reading to bylaw C-1260-64.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Any questions for administration at this point? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question, Allison. I wasn't here last council meeting. I've never seen an intensive recreation area named before. Maybe I missed that before. There was a house already built, and this was annexed area, so we're just cleaning stuff up here.
Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Councillor McLean. As with the county land use bylaw, it's still in effect in the rural service area. The IR district is a land use district that exists in the county's land use bylaw. And the purpose of that district is for uses such as campgrounds. And there was an existing home on the property. It could have remained that way, so I wouldn't say that it's cleaning it up. But in order to sell the house as a private residence, it would have to be subdivided into its own lot. But that district in itself would allow the house to have remained as part of a larger parcel, if that was the choice.
Thanks, Ms. Downing. Councillor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Allison, could you speak to the rationale to going towards the direct control? I'm assuming there's probably not, we don't have a country residential yet. Is that the case?
Thank you, Councillor Tarrant. Yes, as we haven't rezoned the properties in the rural service area, we are not able to rezon to a county district. We can't change the county's land use bylaw or use any of their districts. So we've created a district in the cities and used a direct control until such time as we rezon all the properties in the rural service area and create appropriate districts.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Downing. Councillor Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Allison, am I correct in assuming that this would be a triggering event, and so this parcel land would be assessed at city rates?
Ms. Downing.
You are correct. This will be a triggering event and will be assessed at city tax rates.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. We'll have another opportunity for questions for administration after allegations or presentations. So I'd ask at this time if there's anybody here to speak in support of this proposed land use bylaw amendment. See, somebody's shuffling out there. Sir, welcome. If you'd care to introduce yourself for council and our recording secretary.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Council, Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering, here representing the landowner of the parcel. So everything's basically summed up already. There's not, unless there's any questions outstanding, I will just clarify a couple of things. There were, we did have discussions with administration regarding the trigger event that does this, and my understanding is that applies, and so is the applicant's understanding that applies to the residential portion, but it will not apply to the remainder of the lands. So that's fair. The reason for this is obviously to facilitate the subdivision, so rezoning being a condition of that. Through the process, we've met with Inalbert Environment and had discussions with them and therefore dedicated, I think it turned out to be roughly half the parcel to, that will come back to the title with the city, based on the environmental reserve. So that coupled with the highway is the reason why we have an internal access through Happy Trails. We couldn't get direct access to 43X. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions for the delegation? Councillor Rice.
Scott, start speaking. You said that the access is through Happy Trails?
Yes.
Is that done by legal agreement or caveat or something? Because I, you know, one would buy a house, you could have no access in a year if somebody got mad.
No, it, thank you, Councillor Rice. That was one of the original discussions that we had with the landowner. And being that they are also owner of the RV park, we were able to put together, we'll put together an agreement that will be registered on title, so they won't be able to block that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Rice. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Any other questions for the delegation, for the landowner representative? I don't see anybody in the queue. Scott, thanks very much for being here tonight. Is there anybody else who wish to speak in support of this application? Don't see anybody moving forward. Is there anybody who wish to speak in opposition of this proposed land use bylaw amendment? Is there anybody who wish to speak in opposition? I don't see anybody else coming forward. So one last time, is there anybody who wish to speak to this land use bylaw amendment as proposed? Again, I don't see anybody coming forward. Council, any last questions for administration? I don't see anybody ringing in, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. Councillor Rice.
I move second reading of bylaw C-1260-64, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. That motion obviously is in order. Any discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move third reading of bylaw C-1260-64, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Last opportunity for any discussion or debate on third and final reading. I don't see nobody. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That handles all of our items under the public hearings. We have no items of unfinished business, and that'd take us into our reports. And this is our development permit issue. Item 8.1, development permit, PL-160821. Mr. Wright, oh, excuse me, Valerie. I'll look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. City of Grand Prairie has received a development permit application to change the use from an existing building to a religious assembly. The property is located at 9710 102 Street. The site is located on the fringe of the Musquesee Park District and is bounded by commercial and residential buildings to the north of the site. I believe actually there is just one residence still remaining there. Canadian National Railway to the south of the site. There is a public parking lot to the east of the site, and obviously Musquesee Park to the west of the site. Nearby community amenities include the curling rink. There's a private parking lot to the west of the curling rink, Second Street Theater. There's a public parking lot that has approximately 220 parking stalls. There are a number of commercial uses that are surrounding the site, and of course the CN Railway to the south. The building was located at the corner of 99th Avenue and 102nd Street prior to it being moved to the current location in 2008. There was, once it was prior to being moved there, the owner, well, actually I think it was the Historical Association, had applied for the use of a community service facility, which was approved, but it never actually was operating out of that building, so it's been vacant since that time. The applicants are proposing to re-side the building, or resurface it, I guess, the exterior, and they plan on doing the cedar siding and stucco, which they don't plan on changing the architectural features of the building, so it would remain historical character and nature to match the neighborhood. The applicant is applying for 100% variance to the parking requirement. The shape of the property and the location of the top of bank restricts further development on the site, so parking cannot be accommodated on the site. There is a total of 23 parking stalls that are required for the use of this religious assembly. Parking requirements are based on the floor area of the assembly area, and the church isn't that large, so 23 parking stalls would accommodate that use. There is adjacent parking available to the site, immediately to the use of the site, as indicated. There's about 220 parking stalls. There are a number of commercial businesses that do utilize this stall, but the nature of the development would be Sunday, would be when people would be coming to this particular site. There might be a few public services that are held on Saturdays, such as weddings, but the majority of the time the parking would be on Sundays. 102nd Street also provides on-street parking, and there is some undeveloped roadway adjacent north of the site that has some informal parking opportunities as well. The applicants will be required to provide a pedestrian connection to the public sidewalk to the north of the site. There's no public sidewalk that is directly east of the subject property, so I'm just placing the cursor here, so the sidewalk to the north ends here, but there is a foot path that walks, as you can see, that crosses 102nd Street. So the applicant on this site, there's a site plan in the landscaping. The applicant is proposing to connect that public sidewalk to the front of their building, as indicated here. The applicant is also required to plant three trees and seven shrubs. There is a substantial amount of natural landscaping to the rear of the property, but there is no landscaping in the front of the property, so we thought it would be beneficial if they could provide some landscaping to, in the perimeter landscaping that's required. There were a total of 10 notices that were sent out to adjacent property owners. We received one call from an adjacent property owner who owns a business in the area, and he was just more curious about where they were proposing that they were going to park if they couldn't accommodate parking on the site. But at the end of the conversation, he really didn't have any concerns with the use. In summary, the use of a religious assembly is not listed as a permitted or discretionary use in the Musquesee Park District. However, council has the authority to approve any other use deemed appropriate that are not listed as a permitted or discretionary use in the district. Administration considers that the proposed use of the building would be acceptable and would be compatible with nearby uses. Furthermore, the proposed external alterations will enhance the appearance of the building, and the use will bring additional activity to the downtown. Administration recommends that council approve development permit, PL-160821, for a religious assembly located at 9710 102 Street with 100% variance to the parking requirement, subject to the conditions in the development permit for the following reasons. Use of a religious assembly is compatible with the commercial and residential uses in the area and will introduce increased activity in the downtown, and there is significant amount of city-owned parking and on-street parking in the immediate area, and the days and times of peak demand for parking for the religious assembly are opposite of the nearby commercial uses. Thank you.
Rhonda, thank you very much. Any questions for administration at this point? Councillor Rice.
Do adjacent business not have a deal with them to use some of their parking adjacent to the building in order to meet their parking requirements?
Rhonda?
Sorry. The adjacent business to the north does utilize that area as well on the roadway or the proposed roadway, but there is currently no parking in the downtown required. And I believe when the development permit application was approved for that particular business, they had a couple parking stalls in the rear of the property that they were utilizing to meet their requirement.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions. Rhonda, right now, when the building gets finished, and hopefully sooner than later, because it's actually an eyesore, how many parking stalls will be on the property itself?
There will be no parking actually on the site itself.
Okay. So that answers one question there. So it's 100% variance, so that's what I'm wondering. Do we need any triggers, like we hear that it's just going to be Saturday and Sunday? We know there's no parking bylaw in downtown cities, but people will build it as they come, and we know this one has no parking, and we have other buildings being built. Is there triggers that if they change their assembly times, should we have something between Monday to Friday, from 8:00 to 5:00, they have to come and ask us if they want to change any of their venue times? Do we have anything in place, or do we need anything?
Currently, there is, you know, the public parking lot that's immediately to the east of them that has 220 parking stalls. So there are a number of parking areas in the downtown that could be utilized, and they are adjacent to the central commercial district that doesn't require any parking. So I think that with the size of the assembly area as well, that there would be sufficient parking in the surrounding areas.
So we don't have nothing in place right now. Thank you.
Councillor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just wondering if someone from administration would be able to give an update as to the progress with the lease regarding the property, if that's relevant information for the development permit.
Sure. I don't know if that would be Rhonda, or maybe if Gary has any additional information. Rhonda?
I'll just add that what I know is that the Land Department has indicated that they will, once the permit is approved, that they will be moving forward with the lease.
Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Rhonda, could you put that slide up where it shows the actual access into the property? Yeah, that one there. Will the city need to do any improvements to that road? Like, do we have any cost to the city, I guess, to enhance that road?
That has not been discussed and won't be required for this development permit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councillor Rice.
Rhonda, when I put that one back up, if you would, please. If I look there to the south, there is that huge, used to be recycling area. Is that area not paved? And could it be used to park? City-owned property, is it not?
That has not been considered or researched at this time.
So the answer's probably yes.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and so we'll ask if there's anybody here to speak in support of this proposed land use bylaw amendment. Anybody here to speak in support of this development permit application? Gentlemen, if this is your application, you wanted to address council and say that it was a good idea, now would be the time to do it. You won't get an opportunity to do that afterwards. We don't bite. We're usually pretty friendly. If you'd just take a seat and introduce yourself, you're welcome.
Good to be here tonight. Terry Rogers. Thank you. I want to really thank the planning department of the city, the work that they've done in preparing this for tonight. I know Rhonda's done a lot in her department. Tremendous, tremendous. I mean, we hope to proceed with this, with your permission, naturally. I think it's a worthwhile project to continue to restore, and so we'd love the opportunity to do that. And yeah, we would restore it to its original intent, its original use, but also, you know, opportunity for the community to use it as well. Absolutely. And so if there are any questions, I would be more than happy to attempt to answer.
Absolutely. I see Councillor Rice is in the queue. Councillor Rice?
What type of religious assembly will it be?
Christian.
So it'd be like a church inside?
Yes, absolutely. Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Rice. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thank you for coming today. There was mention that there'd be church services and weddings and stuff like that would be taking place. Is there any possibility of youth group meeting during the week and that sort of thing during off-weekend hours?
I think, absolutely. I think the opportunity would be there for evening, evening activities associated with the religious assembly. Yeah.
So the plans for development are to make the top part church area, and the basement would be something that you could, I'm supposing, rent out, like daycare kind of thing?
Well, we are looking at options, absolutely. That's a possible viability, however, we'll see. We'll see. And I mean, like I said previously, that the building will be open to the community as well. So matter of fact, in our last board meeting, we were trying to decide a name that would enhance the worship center and a community center associated with it, so that it could be used for the community, for different, you know, whether it be AA or whomever wishes to use the facility, you know, within reason.
Thank you very much. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Appreciate it. Would you be against, if there was, say, an amendment made that from Monday to Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, unless you changed your gathering at this church, I guess it's going to be, or assembly, it used to be a church, I don't know what it's going to turn into, that you'd be against an amendment of a change like that of, you know, peak hours with downtown gatherings? Like, I'm not saying one or two years, but if you change your mass time from Saturday to Sunday, because as we know, certain assemblies end up having stuff at Wednesdays or Thursdays. I'm just wondering, would you be against during the day?
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. I think, as Rhonda indicated, there's ample parking. I mean, there wouldn't be a large volume during the weeknight. It would be during the weeknight, as well as traditionally, historically, Sundays has been the time for the Christian service, and it'll continue to be so.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Thank you very much for being here to answer some questions. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wish to speak to this development permit application? Is there anyone who wish to speak in opposition to the development permit application? Is there anyone who wish to speak to this application for a development permit for a religious assembly? See no one coming forward, and so we'll move on to business arising and look for a motion on business arising. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was going to try an amendment, and then I'll speak to it.
You have to actually make a motion before we can make something.
Well, I'll let someone else make the motion first.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Rice.
I move the council-approved development permit, PL-160821, for a religious assembly located at 9710 102 Street with 100% variance to the parking requirement, subject to the conditions contained in the development permit attachment 7.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that if the assembly changes its operation times, for a main gathering in the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM from Monday to Friday, that they come back to the proper committee for approval. And speaking to this amendment is, we let downtown associations not have a parking bylaw. We're getting buildings built, not having enough parking, and eventually the city's going to have to build a parkade on the taxpayers' dollars. So when you say we got enough stalls, depending what time of season it is, I'm a little lary, so I'm making that amendment. Thank you.
be during the weeknight, as well as traditionally, historically, Sundays has been the time for the Christian service. And it'll continue to be so.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Thank you very much for being here to answer some questions. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wish to speak to this development permit application? Is there anyone who wish to speak in opposition to the development permit application? Is there anyone who wish to speak to this application for a development permit for a religious assembly? See no one coming forward. And so we'll move on to business arising and look for a motion on business arising. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was going to try an amendment, and then I'll speak to it.
You have to actually make a motion before we can make something.
Well, I'll let someone else make the motion first.
Okay, thank you. Council Rice?
I move the council-approved development permit PL 160821 for a religious assembly located at 9710102nd Street with 100% variance to the parking requirement, subject to the conditions contained in the development permit attachment seven.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Rice. Any discussion or debate?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that if the assembly changes its operation times, remain gathering from, in the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM from Monday to Friday, that they come back to the proper committee for approval. And speaking to this amendment is, we let downtown association not have a parking by law. We're getting buildings built, not having enough parking. And eventually, the city's going to have to build a parcade on the taxpayers' dollars. So when you say we got enough stalls, depending what time of season is, I'm a little wary. So I'm making that amendment. Thank you.
So that amendment, Council McLean would actually have to be, I would imagine, one of the conditions in the development permit. So was that your intention? So which number were you intending it to be?
Whatever the number the administration's going to say, I, I'm trying to make an amendment on it, so.
So to make that amendment, you need to inform council of where you wish to amend the development permit application?
Okay.
The, excuse me, the notice of...
So number one, where are you looking at, Mayor?
So the development permit has conditions?
Yes, and that's where I'm looking at. Yeah, make it number eight.
Okay, thanks for that very much, Council McLean. So Council McLean would make a motion to add a eighth condition to the development permit to restrict the operating hours?
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor Given. And I spoke to the reasons why, because we let parking by law go downtown. And we have buildings and things happening now that it's going to become congested. And my reason is, in the future, we will be building a parcade on the taxpayers' time.
Okay, thanks very much, Council McLean. So we have a discussion, debate on the motion. I see administration in the queue. I'm just, let me get on to you.
I would just like to say that we have a number eight already. If we could recommend that it would be number 10.
Okay. Sure, I think Council McLean's okay with that. It might have been on the second page, but never, never mind there. Okay, open for discussion and debate on the amendment. Council Rice?
I, I don't see Ms. Williams Legislative Services here. So we'll throw this right at the esteemed city clerk, who is gassed with the responsibility of keeping us on legal. I, can we do that? I don't think legally we have the right to do that. We'd have to have a whole new bylaw. We used to restrict hours of businesses and that got thrown out. So would we not have to have a whole new bylaw?
Mr. Anderson, or I, you know what, I, I'll, we'll give you a shot at it, Ken, because, because Helen set you up for that. But then I will secondly look to our folks in development permitting. Mr. Anderson?
Well, Mayor Given, I believe that council could add another condition. You're limiting the use further, so I think you have the ability to do that.
Subject to the confirmation of administration or development area, Rhonda Stewart, do you care to comment on our ability to add that?
Mayor Given, Council Rice, yep, we certainly could put a condition of that nature on the development permit. Of course, that would be extremely challenging to actually enforce that and to, to check to see what's going on. And also for vehicles, say, that are parking on the east side in a city public parking lot, which businesses they're actually using.
Thanks very much, Mr. Rice. Council O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm going to vote, I'm not for this at all. I don't think the building that we're subject is, has enough room for a great amount of people to meet. And so I don't think that it's a concern at this point in time.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate on the amendment? I don't see anybody in the queue. Council McLean wants to close.
Thank you very, very much, Mayor Given. To close, when you're asked for 100% variance and you don't have a parking by law and you have buildings being built, don't have sufficient parking, we are going to have problems down the road. So just making aware of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Council McLean. So that's the close. So we'll call for the vote on Council McLean's motion to add an additional condition to the development permit to restrict the operating hours. Other religious assembly, please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, so we'll go back to Council Rice's original motion. Open for discussion, debate on Council Rice's original motion to approve development permit, PL 160821. Any discussion or debate? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe that handles all of our items under 8.1. So we'll move on to item 8.2, Strategic Priorities Chart for October to December. Is Mr. Olinger going to introduce this one? Mr. Olinger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we have come upon the, the last quarter of the year, we are introducing the Strategic Priorities Chart. This document is produced quarterly so that the public is aware of council's priorities as well as the advocacy priorities. There are two changes to priorities for this month. The recruitment process for the CAO who is retiring at the end of December. And secondly, there's an item under advocacy priorities, which is addressing tax competitiveness. And the strategic priorities chart, the next one will be for January to March.
Thanks very much, Mr. Olinger. Can I get a motion to approve the strategic priorities chart? Council Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move city council approve the strategic priorities chart for the term October to December 2016.
Thanks very much, Council Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that'll take us to our additional agenda item, item 8.3, Appointment to Subdivision and Development Appeal Board. Can I get a motion to make that public member appointment to subdivision and development appeal board? Council Rice?
I move that John Crow can be appointed to the subdivision and development appeal board.
Thanks very much, Council Rice. And maybe just for a one, for a one or two-year term, I look to our Legislative Services Manager.
That's at council's discretion.
For a two-year term.
Two-year term, okay. Thanks very much, Council Rice. Open for discussion and debate. I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And we'll move into committee business, starting with item 9.1, Council Committee of the Whole from November 18th. This was our council budget discussion. Can I have a motion to adopt that set of minutes? Council Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held Friday, November 18th, 2016, as presented. As Mayor Given has outlined, this really are the minutes of our 2017 budget review day.
Thanks very much, Council Redburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Council Rice?
Sorry.
Okay, thanks, Council Rice. I don't see anybody in the queue. I'll call for the vote on adopting that set of minutes. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to business arising. Council Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve the funding strategies as amended for the 2017, 2018 operating and capital budgets.
Thanks very much, Council Redburn. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to split this.
Sure, we can split the motion between the 2017 and 2018 years. Absolutely. Any other discussion or debate? We'll start by voting on 2017, and then we'll move to voting on 2018. So any discussion or debate on adoption of the 2017 funding strategies? Council Rice?
I support the motion that's been made, and particularly with a reflection of the economy as it's at. However, I do recognize that it was not a decision to be made lightly. If you start living on your savings, you're going to hit a wall down the road. So as I say, it was, I believe that we're in a unique economical period of time, and for that reason, I support the motion.
Thanks very much, Council Rice. Any other discussion or debate? Council O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I also would support this budget the way it is now, but also it, it isn't finalized till the spring, correct? So there could be alternate sources of funding and, and possible monies available to maybe make amendments at that time.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. Certainly, the budget isn't closed until council sets the mill rate in the spring. And there is obviously a significant amount of uncertainty around the provincial budget as well. And so ultimately, this gives administration directions on the strategies and business planning that they propose to us. And then ultimately, the tax rate would come when we set that mill rate in the spring. Absolutely. Council Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting the motion. I do want to make a note, though, I do object with the characterization of the fact that we are dipping into savings just to reduce taxes. I, I think the, it was council's intention from the beginning to use the financial stabilization reserve to pay for annexation costs. And I think there was the intent there was that we didn't want the annexation to be an additional tax burden on city taxpayers. And so that's, I think, was an appropriate use of the reserve, and that was what was originally planned for. And I think we're just carrying out with that original vision. And so I don't see it as a, oh, let's just dip into reserves to, to bring down the tax rate. It was a pre-planned, thoughtful move by council to make sure that annexation costs are not borne by city residents right now.
Thanks, Council Tarrant. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote on adoption of the funding strategies for the 2017 operating and capital budgets. And we'll vote secondly after that on the 2018 one. So for 2017, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we will move to the 2018 operating capital budgets. Is there a need for discussion and debate on that one? Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, a quick question again. What was 2018 increase going to be as it stands now?
Mr. Anderson?
Well, being that there was the use of a reserve to fund off 17, which wasn't carried forward to 18, probably in the order of 5%. However, I wouldn't consider it complete until the budget review in the fall of next year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Any discussion or debate on the motion to adopt the 2018 operating and capital budgets? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And I believe that would take us to 9.2, the Community Growth Committee meeting. And Council Clayton, would you care to put that set of minutes?
Sure, thanks, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the community growth, or approve, sorry, the community growth minutes as presented from November 15th.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Clayton, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There was a presentation regarding the upcoming professional services incubator, which was approved by council at this last budget session. So stay tuned for more information on that. It's a great opportunity that the city is supporting. And as well, there was a report from Ms. Gardner, the environmental stewardship manager, in regards to financial impacts of solid waste material generated within the city. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. So we'll move on to 9.3, the Community Living Committee. And Council Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the minutes of November 15th, Community Living Committee meeting.
Thanks very much, Council Tarrant. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to catch before we adopt them? Seeing nothing, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Tarrant?
There's a number of motions coming out of the committee. So the first one, I will move that council award tender T 79-433-16 renovations and modernization at South Bear Creek Pavilion to K Shaw &amp; Sons Contracting in the amount of $825,700 exclusive of GST.
Thanks very much, Council Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question. I guess Council Tarrant can answer this or administration. I didn't see in the package of the others that, it on the process. And was that just an oversight that wasn't put in? And, because sometimes when we have RFPs, we put them in over the, the only bidder.
Councilor Tarrant?
I believe there was two other bits.
So my question?
It's involved, it was included in the community living agenda.
Okay, but I, on this one, I didn't see it. So unless I was wrong, is it in here in the agenda? Because I thought I didn't see it in this agenda.
It would be in the agenda package at the committee meeting. It wouldn't have been in the minutes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Those, the other bidders are never in the minutes? The motion made at the committee would be for the successful or the recommended submitter?
And both, if my memory serves me right, I think both the other bidders were just, just up north of a million dollars.
Yeah, thanks very much, Council Tarrant. Council O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I was just wondering if we could have Mr. Tarrant talk about some of the upgrades that we were doing for our people that are on TV.
Council Tarrant, you want to go through and itemize all the upgrades that will be happening?
Just to name a couple of them.
I could give a couple, and maybe Director Roth can fill me in where I missed. But it's one of the biggest upgrades to the pavilion there is to the winter night, winterization of it. So the upgrades to the bathrooms there to make them usable all year round, as well as some minor upgrades to the concession facilities and, and the heating system. Is there anything?
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The next motion here is, I will move that council direct the mayor to write a letter to the county of Grand Prairie requesting their participation in a partnership to develop the proposed intermunicipal trail for consideration in the next capital plan. In, in speaking to this, council may recall the trail connection to the south, going from Muscat CP Park and to connect up with the county trails, and eventually connect with a trail that would go through the county to the bridge on Highway 40 over the Wapiti. And, you know, in the past, the county had asked that we fund the portion in city, within city boundaries to complete that trail connection. Administration has done some work on it. We, we engaged a consultant to look at this area. And what was found was that there, they've given a recommendation for how exactly the best route for this. The consultant recommended that the majority of it be actually in the, along the county lands there. And so the greatest cost of that, this connection, trail connection would be to the county. And so the recommendation was that we sit down with the, with the county to develop a partnership and looking at the trail system and, I think, also looking at in the context of the intermunicipal collaboration frameworks to see what the appropriate cost-sharing mechanism would be for this type of facility, this type of infrastructure.
Thanks very much, Council Tarrant. Council Rice?
So was the consultant, our consultant, or a consultant that had been hired by the county to design this?
This was our consultant.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion or debate?
Maybe, maybe I'll just, you know, a little, you know, little bit of, you know, they kind of went over the, the proposed route. And I think some of the challenges, if we had put it on our side of the fence, was that there was significant wetlands there and some boggy areas. Also, there was, we would have to cut through some aquaterra lands, and they had some concerns with the trail running right through, you know, past the, past the dump there. And so the recommendation was on the other side of the road. And that's where it ends.
Council Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The other part of the motion that speaks to the next capital plan, I think the thinking there was that we would look at it in our next four-year budget plan, operational and capital.
Thanks, Council Redburn. I don't see anybody else in the queue. If there's no, if there's no further discussion and debate, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion's carried. Council Tarrant?
And the final motion is that I'd move that council approve the pass, that passes be offered at a 50% discount. Sorry, and this should, maybe we're missing a word there, but should be transit passes, be offered at a 50% discount and qualifying thresholds remain at low-income cutoff threshold plus 30%. And council may recall, we've had with our, sorry, the low-income, low-income transit program, we were being quite oversubscribed to it. And it was having a huge budget impact on our transit department because so many people were accessing the program. And so there was a loss of revenue for the transit. And so committee was asked to look at a number of different options for how we could address that. And one of the ones was to, instead of giving the passes for free, that we would offer it at a 50% discount. And that thresholds would remain the same. at a 50% discount, and that thresholds would remain the same. In speaking to that, committee also is looking forward to report, to see how the program is being handled, and seeing whether there may be, whether there's maybe future budget implications for whether we want to increase that, or whether there's another mechanism that may be the best way to serve the low-income transit users. Administration noted they're looking at what other cities are doing and how they're monitoring as well.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Rice?
I know that there are some where we give them free passes, like to the schools and that type of thing. That still continues, does it, or does this get wrapped up in this?
This is, this is, sorry, thank you, Mayor Given. This is separate. This was the specific low-income transit for individuals that have, you know, meet the low-income threshold, are able to apply for this. This has nothing to do with the promotional and sponsorship.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So how many we're hoping to cut off from this process? So if so many apply, how many we're hoping to cut off so they'll stay within budget? Administration, answer that?
Counselor Tarrant?
Well, so I'll maybe make one comment. So one of the options we had was that we could have changed the threshold so that it was just a low-income cutoff, and cut off that, that plus 30%. In that case, you would have reduced the number of people that would have been able to qualify for the program. In doing this, we felt that, committee felt that we'd have a broader number of people, all the people that are accessing it now would still be able to access the program. However, it was just, now it's going to be a 50% discount, as opposed to having 100% paid for.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. I don't see any other questions or discussion. I don't see anybody in the queue. So I'll call for Counselor McLean?
Just to finish up, Mayor Given, thank you. I guess it might be with Gary with this question. Is it, or Colby, I mean, sorry about that. Would, there's going to be people that are going to fall through the loops here, and there's going to be a percentage. Have we did the calculation by this change, how many might fall through that might not be able to take transit? We're saying it's 50%, but there is going to be some that won't be able to afford it. So have we done those calculations?
Director Roth? I believe this would be on Community Social Development. That's why I'm directing it.
Yeah, thank you. It's really difficult to answer that exactly as to how many people would not be able to afford the 50% discounted transit passes. We have done a quick questionnaire with our customers, and majority of them have said that they could afford to pay something, but they never, it's really difficult to determine what the ability to pay is for that specific level for transit. 50% transit pass comes to $27 a month for an adult, and less for students and seniors. So it is quite low compared to our regular passes.
Thanks very much. Director Roth? Counselor Tarrant, do you have something further? Sorry, if you just want to turn your microphone on there.
Just wanted to add a little bit further. One of the options that's going to be looked at in the future is possibly having a tiered system, where if you have sort of those individuals that are, you know, extremely low-income, they may receive a higher discount. And then those with a moderate income would receive a lesser discount, and that may be one way to go about it, to address that, those concerns.
Thanks very much. Counselor Rice?
May my question to Mr. Roth. I assume you're going to be monitoring this situation. Was one of the considerations if, is there a possibility that some of the seniors may find it cheaper to switch to DTS, thereby putting additional strain on them?
Director Roth?
I guess that certainly might be a possibility. We will be monitoring it, as I've talked about at budget time. Part of the funding we request was to also do some additional monitoring around this program specifically. So we are going to be doing a little bit more in-depth monitoring and surveys.
Thank you very much.
Director Roth? I don't see anybody else in the queue. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to the Community Safety Committee meeting from November 22nd. Counselor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I'll be giving the report on behalf of Counselor Thiessen is not here today, so be easy on me. I move the council received the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 22nd, 2016, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Again, seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Counselor O'Toole, anything you'd like to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, we had a relatively short meeting. There was a number of items that were brought up. We had one concern over private use of the city snow dump, and some of the issues that we would have regarding safety and monitoring the snow dump. We also had a report given by the storm water management team, and some of the processes we can do to find concerns and issues. If you remember back last summer, we had some concerns in the downtown area with flooding. So we are looking at doing some more testing and consultants with the master plan there. And also, we had some correspondence from the Grand Prairie District Catholic Schools regarding traffic lights to be installed at the St. John Paul Second School. And we'll be sending correspondence to the county, because the county and the city would have to cooperate with that as well. And I just want to thank our administration for diligent work on getting our outstanding items list down, to, and making the deadlines that we've asked for, and so kudos to our team. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I believe we voted on that motion, didn't we, to adopt the set of minutes? I believe so. Thank you. That handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence today. We had no public delegations. They were only with respect to the development permit application and the public hearing. And we have no notices of motion tonight, and so it'll take us to council member reports from our external agencies, boards, and commissions. And we'll start with Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. We had a meeting that was supposed to be held last week, and it was just not possible with a number of the members on boards that sit on the board are from different municipalities, and budget talks were in everybody's mind. So we will be having our AGM this week, and I will have a full report on who the new members will be. And with that, the Community Futures is giving out lending, I guess is the proper word, lending out to a number of businesses, and we're very active right now. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Move to the Disabled Transportation Society, Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a few things from the November 22nd DTS Board meeting. We're looking at, we're discussing some potential charge to clients who frequently cancel book trips. It's becoming quite a problem. It's not widespread, but there are certain clients who are very consistent in doing that and doing it late. And so we've asked our coordinator to research what other DTS services do. We're revising dispatcher hours to better provide more efficient service. We're reviewing the timing of the ordering of new buses. And we've done some administrative changes to become financially more efficient. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Counselor Clayton with the Downtown Beer Z.
I just wanted to remind everybody that on Saturday, Sunday rather, the Santa Parade takes place downtown on 100th Avenue from the United Church heading east. And the weather currently looks like it'll be decently warm, but dress for it and come out and see Santa and the many businesses that get involved in it. Bring your children, it's definitely a fun day. So hope to see y'all there. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. And we'll move on to Nighthawk Recreation Area Board, Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A few highlights from our November 16th Board meeting. We reviewed and viewed a staff member and promo orientation video on the Nighthawk Recreation Area. We've received the ski swap summary. It was $101,000 involved in the ski swap, and Nighthawk's take of that is $13,000, which is up from, I think, $9,000 last year, so that was positive. We're looking at some bylaw changes to include partner ski hill user groups as having a board representation. Service Credit Union has, for $20,000, is sponsoring first Fridays of each month, free hill tickets. So good on them, great service, and I guess guaranteed revenue, and good exposure for Service Credit Union. So thank you for their sponsorship. Sunday brunch is still being reasonably well-received, so I'd encourage people to check it out at some point. And I think we had a soft opening on November 26th, and I haven't had an update on that. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. I don't think we had any reports from any external agencies, or sorry, any other external agencies, boards, or commissions. And so we'll start Council Roundtable. Counselor Redburn, maybe we'll just start with you, since you're the last one to have your microphone on.
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to do just a couple of things. One, actually, Dawn and I went to the Northern Spirit Light Show Gala, had an opening, and we had a chance to celebrate, had a kind of bit of a reception, a couple of speeches, had some opportunity to go on the rides. I didn't that night, but many people did, and it was really packed. There must have been 300 people, sponsors, volunteers, and those involved in the light show. So again, it's becoming a very, it's becoming a regular event on a number of families' calendar for this time of the year. And so I think it's just very, very, very well done. And I think the only other thing, I did attend the sobriety walk open house at the Salvation Army, and I think I appreciated some interest. There were some tables there where there were some services that are provided to those or that are having addiction issues. And evening at the airport, really appreciate the Airport Commission hosting council to receive some updates as to the work they're doing and what progress they're making on priorities that council had shared with them. So thank you to the Airport Commission and Chairman Bootle for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Redburn. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've got a list of things that I've done over the last couple of weeks, but I'm going to just talk about a couple of things. I had the honor of going to the Grand Prairie composite high school on Thursday, November 10th, and they had their own Remembrance Day ceremony. And I got to admit that the entertainment was very, very good. The artwork that they, the class did a picture that's actually in the Canadian War Museum in Ottawa. And I've seen the original, and this one looks very close to it. But it was, the part that got me was there was probably, well, I can tell you, the gymnasium was completely full of people. Students were very, very, very well-attended, and were into the whole ceremony aspect of it. It lasted a little over an hour, and it was a great experience. And on the Friday, November 11th, I had a request from my youngest granddaughter to march with me in the parade, because she felt that that was something that she wanted to do with her grandpa. So there was, I was quite honored to have her come with me as well. So there's a lot of other things I did, but those two stand out most in this last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
All right. I attended the Apega Dinner Meeting, and Apega, of course, is the Association of Professional Engineers, Geologists, and Geophysicists of Alberta. Annually, they do come up here, where they conduct new members, and share with us what they've been doing. So it's always a very interesting meeting. I attended the Wembley West Waterline Meeting. I'd like to say I was very pleased to be flanked by the expertise of Christine Donnelly. It was a real asset. The Grand Prairie Airport Dinner, thank all of council who came out to that. I think it was an opportunity to give an update on what's happening at the airport, and certainly lots of questions. So I thank those, the budget meetings, the council's strategic planning sessions, and we all were at. I attended the Hughes Lake Workshop, and again, I really have to commend Allison Downing. It was a fabulous meeting. It was very, very interesting, the format with the workshop, and what don't you want to see changed, and what do you want to see with the residents of the area? And they really, I think they really appreciated and enjoyed the hands-on format of that meeting. So congratulations to the staff there. And I attended 150th Anniversary Intermunicipal Meeting, where we did some preliminary planning on if there is the opportunity to regionally do a celebration for the Canada's 150th Anniversary. So, and again, Mr. Roth was a valuable ally at that meeting, as was Karen McCriscan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As Counselor O'Toole was speaking there, we missed the last one because AMDC conference, so I'll speak to that first on November 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th. Also, Counselor Clayton came as well. Just speak to a couple of things. We are political, and when they have, they have a different format than AUMA, when they had the opposition party members speaking. And even when the government officials came in later, there was only one opposition leader that said he wants linear regional assessment to be shared more equally. I found that pretty good by Dr. David Swan. But there was actually booing for some of our government in power, and I found that surprising. I'd never seen that before. Usually, there's a little bit of clapping, but at this conference, there was some convention, there was some booing. So, and so it was a good conference to be at, not from booing, but I'm just saying that the government didn't have an easy ride. November 13th, I did a proclamation reading on behalf of the mayor and council for a World Premature Day celebration. It was the fourth annual QE2 NICU graduation tea. I was glad to do that. Counselor Thiessen was there. My children were premature, so I was very glad to be there and do it. And the last one I'll speak to with Counselor Rice was about the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan. This is very, very important. As you know, if you come into our city from any direction, you have commercial mostly right up to the road, and it's not really eye-pleasing. So an area structure plan for mobility and connection would be great to have, because we need to clean it up quite a bit, I think, I hope. And I hope that when the end result comes, it'll look good. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor McLean? Counselor Logan?
I attended one item that would be new to the conversation. That was the attendance at the PACE Board of Directors, November 16th. PACE is an organization that does a tremendous job in our community with social service, with the social service programs that they have. And it's always good to see, sit down with them and see how things are going.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Many of the things have already been mentioned tonight. However, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. The Regional Hospital Foundation Event Festival Trees was last weekend and the weekend before. I had an opportunity to attended it on a few different events, and once again, they hosted a great event. They raised significant dollars for the Regional Hospital Foundation, and it was very well-attended. So congratulations to the many, many volunteers that put on that event. And as well, I just wanted to say that I thoroughly enjoyed our communicate, or our discussion, rather, on the Bear Creek Pool 50% drawings, and I'm looking forward to seeing the next stages on that. So thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Most of the things have been mentioned, but I will again give kudos for the presentation for the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan. I think it was very well-presented. It was good to see the input from residents there, and yeah, agreed on that. Also, I think, you know, kudos to council for a tough, tough budget. I think it was, you know, a long day, but I think we were able to get some good resolution and make some difficult decisions.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Number of events have already been mentioned, obviously. The public open house and landowner workshop for Hughes Lake was excellent, as previously mentioned. I'll mention two other items that I don't think any other council members that are here attended at. On Sunday, the 20th, I was able to attend at the Sikh Missionary Society Facility, or the Sikh Temple on the east side, to celebrate a donation of $200,000 from the Sikh community in Grand Prairie and in Calgary towards the trauma room at, in the new Grand Prairie Regional Hospital. I just want to extend my appreciation to our Sikh community. I just want to extend my appreciation to our Sikh community here for engaging other members of their community outside of Grand Prairie to support this initiative. Over approximately a hundred thousand dollars was raised in Calgary, and the community said that they were looking forward to perhaps trying a similar event in Edmonton as well with the intention of raising more money for the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital. So certainly appreciate the efforts of that community to support this fantastic regional facility that's going to benefit all of us. And on Monday, the twenty-first, I had an opportunity to meet with a second group of YMCA Bridging the Gap students here at City Hall, and speak with them about local government, the importance of local government, the impact that it has on their day-to-day lives, as well as all the jobs that there are available in local government with the City of Grand Prairie, with other municipalities. Everything from web designers to mechanics, to welders, to plumbers, to city managers, to people who do stuff with calculators or whatever Ken does. I assume that's what Ken does, is use a calculator a lot, probably. And other things, and other things. A little bit of levity, but obviously, the City of Grand Prairie and municipal governments in general have a wide variety of jobs and vocations, and just want to impress upon the students that as they think about careers, municipal government and local government is a great opportunity, no matter what kind of career they might have an interest in. And I certainly would encourage any youth to think about local government as a career alternative. With that, I think we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.